I don't think we're on air. Let's see, there we go. I'd like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission. Tonight is Wednesday, December 18th, 2019 here at Town Hall. All commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Hampton, who is absent and excused. Looks like we don't have any public comment this evening because there's nobody in the chairs out there. So with that, I will go ahead and entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from December 4th.
I move to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
All those in favor of approval of the minutes say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Hampton absent and excused. Is there any new business this evening? No? Okay, and with that, we will go ahead and move into the public hearing. Will be led today by Dave Boyd, Senior Planner with the City of Bothell. It'll be on downtown historic preservation code amendments.
Thank you and good evening. Have a short presentation. This is pretty similar to what you saw back on November 20th, but I did want to include it for this, for the public hearing, for the record, and also to have images for you to speak to as we get into deliberations or discussion. So again, we are looking at the, this is focused on downtown preservation code amendments. The area in the yellow that extends off the image to 104th is the downtown special review area that where the downtown historic resources guidelines apply. The significant amount of the focus is on Main Street, particularly the two blocks from Bothell Way to 102nd. And those code amendments do apply not only in the DSRA and properties that have been deemed eligible for the historic register. It also applies to projects that are on the, or eligible for the historic register outside of the DRA, DSRA, within the downtown subarea. So the purpose is to preserve and restore historic structures, especially along Main Street. Highest priority would be given to preserving and restoring entire structures. Second priority would be preserving and restoring facades, historic facades. And then finally, the guidelines, the historic resources regulations include provisions to make sure that new structures respect and complement that historic fabric. So the downtown core district requirements establish setback regulations. They include a parking exception, and this is new since last time, that one of the comments at the joint study session with the Landmark Preservation Board was to look at incentives, including possibly related to the parking requirement. So even before the downtown plan, we had this provision that said that existing structures in the central business special district, which is now the downtown special review area, were exempted from all parking requirements. The downtown plan translated that into a provision that no minimum parking requirement shall apply to ground floor retail uses running on Main Street. What's proposed?
Yeah, question. The emphasis in all of these exceptions are on existing, and we have this parcel on Main and 102nd that's now vacant.
I'm going to get to that.
Okay, you got to that, thanks.
Very shortly, in fact. I'm going to use that as an example. So the current code doesn't apply to existing structures. So based on the comment and the interest in a parking exception that would prioritize historic preservation, one way to do that, a very simple way, would be to go back to exempting existing structures. So, and that raises a question, a policy question. Should the code incentivize all ground floor retail on Main Street as it currently does, or only existing ground floor retail on Main Street? So as an example, Bothell Mall site there. If you can imagine that it was still there and a developer was proposing to tear down that existing building and build a new. Currently, the code would exempt any, and the code does require ground floor retail facing Main Street. And currently, the code would exempt that, whether they were preserving the existing building or building new. So that's just as an example of how making this change could have an impact. It could provide some incentive to a developer, property owner, to preserve the existing structure rather than rebuilding. And then, this is mostly going to be a review from last time. So skipping ahead to the architectural styles section of the downtown plan, we're suggesting some modest improvements or changes to that code, some explanatory language that explains that the first two sections, since they're not all listed in chronological order, explaining that they start with commercial buildings and then go to largely residential styles. And then the change in the time period to accommodate adding a mid-century modern styles, and then changing the numbering to reflect that. And so we adjusted the existing styles and then created this one to fill in because currently, there's a gap in the styles for the commercial architecture. We're also proposing that with this addition of another style to move the First Lutheran Church example under that, and then add some other existing examples within Bothell, and then we're also, will add some non-Bothell uses or examples as the other styles do. Also, in the historic, the beginning part of the historic resources regulations, this is example of a more readable map that's been reformatted to be more, a little easier to read. We've corrected references in that introductory section and made a change to make, to state that the regulations for projects in the DSRA are mandatory for projects that are on the register or eligible for the register. Previously, it said that these, such projects should follow these regulations. Now it says shall follow these regulations. And then, within the body of that section, we've, as we talked, that the core of the changes to strengthen the historic preservation provisions are to change several of the guidelines to requirements. And in this latest version, we've listed the requirements first to give them priority. So going into some of those individual changes, we, one change recognizes that renovations can have their own historical value, as in the building that now houses Hana Sushi. It was, the original building is in the upper left there. It was later modified and with this relief, plaster relief sort of neo-classical motif. So under these regulations, they still encourage restoring to either the original or renovating and restoring and preserving the renovated facade from the '30s. Similarly, across the street, you see Alexa's Restaurant there. That renovation was done with an effort to restore to its original character. They unfortunately found that the wood paneling that had been put up didn't cover the old brick, that the brick was, had been removed. But they were able to restore the transom windows or reinstate the transom windows and did go with a brick facade as the original building had. So we've also added a provision to address the value of saving part of the original masonry. And that was also kind of a lesson learned from the Alexa's experience. They did have, original masonry had been painted on the lower columns on the facade. But since they couldn't, they didn't have it up above, they chose to replace all of it. And we don't think that's a requirement that we, or something that we can necessarily need to have as a requirement, but we have included it as a guideline to give some encouragement to folks restoring these facades to save any original brick. And part of the problem was that that style of brick wasn't available anymore, but there was an opportunity here with the new canopy to have a natural break and use it if, similar but complementary brick pattern above. And speaking of canopies, the code didn't previously address canopies, so we've added that, those provisions in to encourage the kind of canopies that are period appropriate, even if the original buildings didn't have canopies. Again, on the other side, the Logston Building has a new canopy. And one of the things about both of these new canopies is, let me go back, is that they're fairly heavy. And so we've added guidelines to encourage a minimal profile that will have the, minimize the impact on the existing historic facades. We talked last meeting about addressing the setback on the north side of the block of Main Street between 101st and 102nd. And we have included some provisional code language that would address that, but that has raised some other questions about that and that we are currently investigating with our legal department. And so we're kind of tabling that discussion for now until we have some more definitive input on that. And again, the issue is that we discovered during the Main Street enhancement project that those buildings are set back about four feet from the property line. The code requires zero setback. And if any of those buildings were to redevelop, we would like to maintain the current storefront line. So we're exploring the best way to do that. We also added a section to address rollout awnings, which were, are apparent in some of the historic photographs and would be an acceptable, suitable application on many of the streets, buildings on Main Street. Now, going beyond regulations, we've talked a little bit about preservation incentives. We already have incentives for property owners that have historic eligible properties. And those include special tax valuation, landmarks, capital grants, federal historic tax credits. Other incentives that we've discussed are parking provisions that we talked about a little bit earlier. The potential for creating a historic district, which we addressed at the joint study session, and the Landmark Preservation Board has made its recommendation to city council on that. So that'll be going to council next year, early next year. We talked about transfer of development rights. This is a tool that might be appropriate to use, but it's, it would be, it's beyond the scope of this, these particular code amendments. So we may make a recommendation to do further study into this, but we're not proposing any specific program at this time. So with that, I open that up for questions and comments. Any public testimony, should there be any? And specifically like direction. We didn't get into a lot of very detailed discussion at the joint study session, but specifically, I'd like to get planning commission's recommendations with regard to the parking exception, whether it does make sense to use that, apply that just to existing buildings rather than all ground floor retail uses. And then, any suggestions regarding the proposed regulations for architectural styles or historic resources.
Well, thank you very much, Dave, for an excellent presentation. As always, I particularly liked the way you put this one together. Thank you very much. That was an outstanding presentation. I also forgot to mention that Sarah Desamone is also here from City of Bothell, part-time staff. Comes with an expertise in historical preservation. So at this time, does anybody have any questions for the presentation that Dave just gave?
One thing that popped into mind, I was approached and asked a specific question. There's going to be a future tenant, I think, in the one building that's taken over, where Steve's Cafe used to be. And he was asking if he can put up, roll up garage doors as more aesthetic and summertime, open them up, have kind of traffic flow outside. Would this be something he would be interested in, where I can point him in the right direction? I don't think he's the building owner. I don't know who owns that building, but that space, what is he allowed to do from a T.I. tenant improvement perspective?
So that's a building that has been significantly modified. And we have allowed roll up doors, or at least roll up windows in the past at the bind. So that's certainly something that could be considered there. And I'll let Sarah weigh in if she has any other thoughts on that. I know she dealt with the binds application.
I wasn't sure if he had to go through specific steps to, you know, basically produce drawings or renderings of what it's supposed to look like, and then say, oh yeah, there's no way we're going to ever do this, or yeah, that's...
Yeah. So any structural modification like that would require an application for tenant improvement permit.
Okay.
And that would be a significant one, yeah. Yes, any significant exterior change to any property within the downtown special review area would also go to the landmark board for an advisory review.
And I figured the proximity location of the facility would have to probably jump over a few more hurdles than usual, I would imagine. So, okay, thank you.
Really, the only additional review would be that landmark board review. Otherwise, it's basically the standard process. Sarah would review it with regard to the historic resources regulations. And then, both her recommendations and the landmark board's recommendations would go to the planner that's reviewing the project.
If I may, I think one other thing in response to Commissioner Pystrick's question is, looking at this, we're talking about specific amendments that we're proposing and asking for your direction on, but I think there's a bigger question here for the commission to consider as well, and one that we'll be posing to the council because they asked us to look into this. And that is, do you think these regulations or changes that we're making, that are intended to do more to preserve the existing buildings and facades, go far enough or too far? Or, you know, generally, what's the commission's feeling about that? So as we're talking through this, I'm not looking for a direct answer to that question right now, but please keep that in mind as we're working through these, so that we can get your sense of whether you think this is the appropriate type and level of regulation that we're proposing, not just regulation, but other things that we're proposing in order to achieve the objective of doing more to preserve the existing buildings and facades. And I would also just note, Mr. Chair, we do have a couple of folks in the audience. I don't think they're here to testify on this, but I just want to make sure we didn't forget to give them an opportunity if they do.
Yes, sounds good. Yes.
So I'd like to go back then to the vacant parcel on 102nd and Main. And but for that parcel, I'd be pretty strongly in favor of the parking exception. My concern now is that might make redevelopment of that parcel very challenging. So I see us having to balance that, I guess. So since there is no existing building there, when, hopefully when and not if, it is redeveloped, they'll be required to provide parking if we go down this route?
Yes.
So what kind of parking would, range would be required in a development of that size? It's not a very large parcel.
Well, the parking for the retail space is one space per 400 square feet. And proposals that we've seen for that had, I think, on the order of 4,000 to 5,000 square feet of retail space. So maybe 10 spaces for the retail space.
Yeah, that looks challenging to me in that location.
It is challenging, especially if you're talking about an existing building. In that case, they do have the ability now to, without doing any demolition, at least not demolishing any full buildings, to come off the alley behind, down underneath, and provide some parking.
Places under there.
Plus, that parcel, that property owner, and that property includes the surface lot to the south. So that's available to meet their parking.
So those could be, those spaces could be dedicated to that building?
They could.
Okay. Yeah, I think the goal of preservation of the existing is an important one, but that gap in Main Street is also a concern.
Yes, we definitely are encouraging all of the gaps along Main Street, and particularly that one, be filled and create that continuous street facade.
Great. And before we have any other, maybe other questions, we'll do take an opportunity, there are a couple people who joined us. If there's anybody who wants to speak to the topic tonight, do either of you all want to speak to the topic? Okay, great. Well, thanks for joining us. It's really awesome to have people in the audience. Any additional questions or comments to Dave, or Sarah, or Michael?
Just one thing I'd like to add on the public outreach front and potential for getting some public comment. Hopefully, at our continued hearing, we will. I did put out, I sent the packet to the chamber and asked them to circulate it to the downtown action committee that is predominantly made up of Main Street merchants. But it may not have gotten out in time for folks to make it to the meeting. But I'm attempting to get on their agenda in January before the continued hearing, to give them a chance to hear what's being proposed and give their feedback. And also to encourage any of them to come to the continued hearing.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dave. Carson?
Thanks for the presentation. I wasn't able to make it to any of the Landmark Preservation Board meetings between our joint session and now. And so I'm wondering, the focus on preservation of existing bulkheads in new renovation projects, I'm wondering if that met with pretty unanimous support from the landmarks board, or was there maybe some discussion on aesthetic continuity?
Yeah, actually, there was no discussion about that from the landmark board. I think that for them, it probably is just assumed that that would need to be preserved if possible. But I can't speak for them.
Well, and I think also maybe the potential discussion about aesthetic continuity maybe is a little unfounded anyway because the whole process is meant to, like, taking Alexa's, for example, the existing column features, which may have been preserved under more rigorous language. It only, there is value in preservation of that because of the feature that separates, visually separates the top from the bottom of the building. So I guess there is language in the code that allows for some flexibility, but I was just wondering if maybe that had been brought up before, or if it was just...
No, it hasn't. And there would be flexibility on that one. I think that it wouldn't be a, you know, it won't say you shall preserve. So I think that would be okay.
Okay, thanks.
I think what we really tried to do there was to address situations where the existing bulkhead did, that there was, the historic bulkhead was still there and intact, that it would strengthen the language towards retaining and restoring that. So we have quite a variety, you know, across, the Three Lions Pub does have the original sandstone bulkhead. Unfortunately, it's been painted, but it's still there, still visible. The building currently housing Hana Sushi, the former Bothell State Bank, still does have a portion of the restored bulkhead. Whether any of the original bulkhead is buried under that plaster or not, we don't know. But that's really what we're trying to get at, is where any of those original features exist, that the language is quite strong in favor of preserving it.
Makes sense. Thank you.
So I understand you can't speak to issues which are currently in legal review, but do you expect to have more information on the north side setback issue for the continued hearing?
Yes, we hope, we certainly hope to. And I think that by January 22nd, we can have a strong recommendation for that.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Dave, you didn't necessarily touch on it in your presentation, but, and maybe we'll get to it here in a bit, but it's just something I wanted to get to before I forgot. And within the document that was provided to us for review, there's, you know, there's the question of demolition of structures, and we're trying to, you know, it seems like we're trying to do all we can to preserve what's there on Main Street and in the DSRA. Has there been any discussion in the, or maybe it's for Sarah or Dave, has there been any discussion within the landmark board or previous planning commissions or councils with regards to expanding? So there's some statements kind of throughout here. Basically, what I'm getting at is, would we want to, as a commission, do, which word was it exactly in here? Basically, design reviews, not just to be on Main Street or the couple areas that are north and south of the, what is it? The 10,000 or the... The 10,000 or the certain block of Main Street? Would we want to make those design reviews that go to the Landmark Preservation Board with regard to either demolition or significant changes in facades? Would we want it to be any building within the DSRA? Has that even, has that ever been explored at all?
Well, any significant exterior change to any building within the DSRA needs to go to the Landmark Board. So certainly a demolition would. So, for example, the Landmark Board weighed in on the demolitions associated with the Merck, as well as the preservation of the three facades on the Merck. The demolitions related to the addition apartments. And partly because of their input, they were required to put the plaque up, identifying those properties that were demolished there. So those are two examples where they have weighed in on proposed demolitions.
Okay, thank you for that. And I kind of spoke to it at a previous meeting. And I guess there's a certain block that I find really interesting in the DSRA. And it's kind of outside of the focus, but I don't think that that doesn't mean it's not, it doesn't have interesting future potential. And it's a bunch of kind of craftsman-style homes. It's on Northeast 183rd, between 102nd and 103rd. And I've spoken to you all about that in the past. I guess I'm trying to kind of wrap my mind around how possible, how those are ever going to have a chance of standing, or continuing on with regards to this area because they don't provide very much square footage. And, you know, the development that's gone up around them isn't significantly larger. So I'm trying to like wrap my mind around, okay, let's say the development community comes in and says, I want to demolish all those homes, and I want to put up another, I guess, an addition style. Because I know we're trying to create kind of continuity. And so now there's this very different style of architecture that's been built right behind it. So what opportunities are there, any possibilities? Or I'm looking for any guidance on ways to preserve any of those structures on that block?
Well, I'll start off, and then I think Sarah can weigh in. So the downtown plan itself, the zoning for that block is the same as the zoning for the addition. So the zoning basically calls for, and you could say that also the policies in the downtown plan calling for creating a denser, more urban center call for that type of development. And all of those homes along that block of 183rd have been bought by a prospective developer. They have not acquired the old Christian Science Church on the corner that's currently houses, what is it, Cranberry Cottage. So on the one hand, the downtown plan says that. On the other hand, there is this downtown special review area and the emphasis on historic preservation. And Sarah presented last week some of her analysis of those properties as perhaps not part of a Main Street-focused historic district, but part of a Lower Maywood-focused residential district, so I'll let her.
Okay, but they are in the DSRA, right?
They are, yeah.
Okay.
And also, really, the only way to truly protect them would be to get them on the register, the Bothell Register individually. Some of them are eligible, some probably aren't. But there is a little bit of leeway in that. So if that's something the developer wanted to do, they certainly could.
So they would have to, the developer would have to agree to that designation? Okay.
Yes. Aside from that, the Landmark Board would have a demolition review with them. So they could potentially, you know, convince the developer to either move them and kind of work around them, or, you know, it's one of those things where they don't have the power to actually say, you can't tear this down, but they do have some negotiating there, so, you know, yeah.
Be a neat opportunity, I think, if they were to have a requirement or something like that. I guess that may be more of a citywide thing to have a certain time period for which if somebody wanted to purchase it and move the house somewhere else, then they would be required to do that. But I'm just kind of throwing that out there. I don't know if that's ever been used in our jurisdiction. But I guess it's being used at Country Village right now for a couple of the buildings.
Exactly, yeah. The Landmark Board has the authority to say, you know, that's something you need to do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It certainly does. I recognize we are reconciling or addressing some conflicting interests with bringing the density into downtown and having the more vibrant urban center with the preservation. And it's a tough one. I don't have a recommendation there.
I guess one other image that might be instructive, I've got too many, is, and this is, here we have, well, it doesn't quite show it. It does show the building on the edge of it. And it shows some larger development on what had been a vacant parcel next to it. Of course, that's where the west end of the addition is now, but it doesn't really show what was envisioned for the rest of that block.
Yeah, I guess I'd leave the commission to think about it between now and the next time we meet, too. If there's anything you want stronger in the language with regards to any ways we might be able to preserve some of those structures. So if there's any capacity for that. Carson?
Thanks. Did you hear enough about the parking exemption from commission?
I would like to get more of a sense of the commissioners that are here, how they would be inclined to...
Okay, well, I'll offer my opinion. I think that downtown has a lot of buildings that, I mean, we can't necessarily build downtown Main Street again in every area of our city, and it's a very special place. With that comes the demand for people to visit and to park their personal vehicles. And so while I do think that parking is necessary on, off Main Street, the requirement for any new retail to provide parking in an area where it's so fragile and it's so desired, every square inch of that, you know, two-block stretch is precious. And so it just, it kind of guts me to see new development have to install, structured parking for areas just right off Main Street where we have a lot of pedestrians and we have a lot of people on other alternative modes of transportation. We have buses that drop people off right next to Main Street. I just think that the exemption should be pursued for all retail areas because it is part of a connected downtown. And if people are interested in pursuing half of Main Street to remain parking, it shows an unwillingness for the community to walk a couple blocks away to visit those businesses. So it's more of a quality issue than a quantity of parking issue. So I would just encourage us to look more towards the future of development, too, and make sure that this is a sustainable and a practical use of this precious space that we have. That's my two cents.
Dave, while we're talking about this, can you go back to that slide, too? The one that you're asking the question about parking? Thanks. Okay. Commissioner Cabe?
Yeah, I agree 100% with Commissioner Curd.
Well, to clarify, the reason that we would have a requirement applied to existing only would be to encourage that the existing structures be maintained and to make it slightly more difficult to demolish and then reconstruct.
Correct.
So with that goal in mind, I support maintaining or inserting the requirement for existing. There aren't that many retail spaces along Main Street that, you know, there is that one parcel that I expressed a concern on, and I believe it can be addressed. But given the interest in maintaining the existing character of Main Street, this would be an incentive which would encourage those existing structures to be maintained as opposed to being demolished and replaced with something different.
So to be clear, like, since we have the slide up and we're looking at the building that I think we're talking about, that's now the empty space after the fire. So kind of explain it to me really briefly, if you could, Dave. When somebody wants to go about, they can go 35 feet on this area, or no?
65.
65 on this?
And there is an upper-level setback above the second story of 20 feet. So that was intended to try to maintain the street-front facade height of one, two-story buildings that we currently have.
So I also, I agree with what Commissioner Kirin said about helping it preserve currently existing buildings. This is a little bit different one. And as buildings over time go away due to whatever, you know, just needing to be replaced, but I guess future planning commissions decades from now will be able to address that as it comes up. I also see, I don't necessarily want to, because there are parking issues down, and it's not just parking, because I spend time driving in and out of there. You have very big trucks and stuff coming in there. So I don't necessarily want to, it can get pretty crowded in there. And because there's really no spaces for commercial vehicles to park, like temporarily, to deliver water, or food, or beer, or whatever they're delivering there. And I've seen almost a couple incidences kind of start up with people getting really frustrated with the commercial deliveries. So I guess I wouldn't want to just exacerbate that by having even less ability to be able to park. But I do like the idea of trying to move towards, you know, less parking requirements downtown. I just wouldn't want us to give away and say, oh, you don't have to do parking, and then we basically, you know, allow, you know, 65 feet, and we basically get no parking, additional parking out of it.
Well, the exception is just for the retail, the ground-floor retail use. So anybody who's going to build up anywhere near the height limit will have to provide parking.
Because most of it will be residential? Okay.
Well, whether it's residential or office, they'll have to provide parking for those.
Oh, good clarification. Thank you, Dave.
Yeah. I also just, I took that image off because I want to make sure that this doesn't apply to that site.
Right.
It also would apply to the other existing gaps along that Main Street, the street front, where we have some parking lots, mostly between Bothell Way and 101st, that we would like to encourage to refill, redevelop and infill that so that we have that continuous
Sure.
window-door, window-door sequence as you go down the street, as you walk down the street. And so that's another reason why I raised this question because limiting it only to existing ground-floor retail could be a minor disincentive for redevelopment that would fill those gaps as well.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes, yes. Sorry, Director.
Don't want to cut anyone off if there are other questions. I had something else I wanted to just throw out for the commission's consideration.
Yes.
And Dave and Sarah can shoot me down on this if I'm totally off-base. Looking back at what was in place before the downtown plan, it looks like that was really geared toward preservation, exempting all parking requirements for buildings built prior to 1982. I'm wondering if there's an approach where we could look at exempting parking for, all parking for the building if it is eligible for the historic register, if it's on Main Street. Those buildings are existing. Most of them are providing some sort of parking already. And then it's tying it to the preservation of that building. That may be a little bit more of an incentive than just for the ground-floor retail. I'm not sure. And we haven't really, that's not something I think we've really looked at that closely. I'm just thinking about it as I'm reading the options up here. So I'll just throw that out for the commission's consideration. And like I said, Dave and Sarah can shoot me down if I'm totally off-base on that.
Actually, I think it's an interesting idea. And I might take it a step further and make it an incentive that if you are eligible and put your building on the register, then you would gain the parking exception.
I like it.
So could you go back to what I'll call the conceptual plan?
The, oh, the rendering?
Yeah, the rendering. I work with people who call them cartoons, but we won't say that. Is, and I recognize trying to infer too much off of this is risky. But is this showing those parking lots that are currently behind the buildings on the north side of Main Street being developed?
No.
No? Okay.
Oh, the north side, actually, it does show a building in the corner.
Yeah, it shows a building on both corners, so they...
There's an existing building on the northeast corner of that block.
Yeah, that's...
Which shows a new one here.
Which would be kind of behind the furniture or design center?
Correct.
Yeah, so is anticipation of the potential reduction of some of the parking there?
Or it could be incorporated.
Incorporated in the design? Okay.
I could envision that part of the block, that all of that parking area behind there being redeveloped with structured parking internal, too. So we can have street-facing retail or office use or something.
Yeah, I think the ideas that you're throwing out about maintaining existing structures and encouraging them to go on the register are good ones. I would just be concerned about going too far. Supporting the chair's concern about parking and accessibility there. So again, it's a balance.
Yeah, and with regards to that, your question there, I remember when you had that, the U-Dub Students Architecture School, they had some really cool ideas for renderings with basically incorporated parking in that area behind the music store and an alleyway that was very kind of vibrant. So there are a lot of neat things you can do, and I don't want, you know, parking requirements to get in the way of, you know, either preservation or good development that the city wants. So I guess I'm kind of, so we know kind of, so it sounds like we're kind of leaning a little bit towards, there was the director's idea with the caveat that maybe Dave threw in with regards to if businesses register, then we will basically waive parking requirements. I mean, yeah, so that's a...
So what I have on my little tally is two are in favor of keeping the parking exception for all ground-floor retail. Two were in favor of using it to incentivize preserving historic or existing structures. And then this other idea of limiting it to those that are either eligible or on the register.
Brad, do you have any idea where you might be leaning on that?
I think my two cents is kind of leaning towards Commissioner Curd and Gabe as well.
Thank you.
The status quo.
I'd like a quick follow-up question. If we did go with the exemption, would it have to be dedicated retail space? Or could it be a flex, like live-work space? Like you get in a lot of the five-over-ones or four-over-ones.
The, well, the current code for that section of Main Street from Bothell Way to 102nd requires ground-floor retail along, fronting on Main Street. So currently, the code wouldn't allow live-work. Or the only kind of live-work that it would allow would be an apartment above a ground-floor shop. Not the kind of live-work that we see in kind of on... Not, not the kind of live-work that we see in kind of on the backside of Six Oaks or on the junction on Popkineway where units that could be either, either residential or commercial.
Okay, that's what I was worried about because it seemed like we had some of those units and we relaxed our standards when they weren't being used for commercial application. I'm trying to remember, it was a long time ago, to allow them to be just used for residential use and I wouldn't want that to be the case up here. That's all I was concerned about.
Yeah. It wouldn't be, and in those cases, the code actually allows them to be either. Along the, along the boulevard, they're required to be retail, ground floor retail. But around the backsides, there is that flexibility. And so they were all actually built originally as residential, ground floor residential spaces, but several of them have converted to commercial spaces and one converted back to residential that I know of anyway.
If it's okay with you guys, I'd like to, and thank you for that, I'd like to go through just the, can we just zip through the attachment one? Dave's given us a great presentation, but I just have some notes on certain pages. So if you can just flip to like the first couple pages of the attachment one? And does anybody have any question?
And I can put it up on screen.
Great. And then one thing I'll mention under the 12.64.504 architectural styles. I know at the very, very bottom of the writings, it talks about predominant architectural styles such as, but not limited to massing horizontal, and it says a lot of things. I don't know quite how to work this in, maybe too complicated. This may, this may be an architectural element, but the idea of shading, because I just, I think, and I've gone to it a few times, but I think it's just so critical that buildings have a particular type of difference between them to make it vibrant and not too blocky. And I guess we have stuff in the elements, but I would, I don't know if there's any way to, that may be something you can't write in there because it's just too complicated. But just so you don't, just get this big shaded area right in the area, you have some light coming through. Like, I wouldn't want over time for everybody to be building up as high as they could and basically just having these cold, you know, dark, wet passageways. So I don't know how you do that. I just thought I'd throw it out as a comment. The setbacks, yeah. Maybe the setbacks.
Yeah, the upper level setback would help to some degree, but as you can, the merk, the taller portion of the building is setback 20 feet from Main Street. So it's, the part on 102nd essentially mimics that upper level setback in the first, I guess, the first portion of Main Street. But that gives you an idea of what kind of shading you could have if someone were to do a full block development of Main Street on other parts of Main Street. And so the, the upper level setback really is to create that one to, or that two to, really a two to three-story facade along the street front as you walk along it. As far as shading, but really the only way to, to do that would be to require some breaks in the building mass along that, that street that would allow.
Right. So I don't know if that's something we'll look at in the future. I know we're not going to look at that this time. It's a little too complicated, but just throw it out there. So let's see, and then in the next couple pages, contemporary styles, applicability.
Quick question on
Yes.
The change to 12.64.504, it's on the screen right now. The sections below list predominantly commercial and mixed-use styles first followed by predominantly residential styles. What was the, why not go chronologically?
Well, currently they're not chronological. They, there was no, no text explaining why, but they show commercial styles first going up from, from turn of the century, turn of the 20th, 19th to 20th century to current day, and then they show some more historical residential styles. So, so we could do, you know, put them all chronological and mix between residential and commercial styles, but we thought just adding this explanatory phase for anyone who was wondering why they weren't, why they were ordered that way would be, might be better.
Fair enough. Okay, thanks. I don't have a, I don't have any direction on that. I think it makes a lot of sense anyway because kind of goes by maybe popularity or frequency rather than, rather than historically, so that's fine.
And then the next couple pages, if anybody had any questions or markings?
Got a special typo.
Okay.
Oh. It's, let's see, in character-defining downtown special review area, so that's number two. Now go to D2, so further down.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, glazing, sheathing, that one?
Yeah, under wood, under wood cladding. What's that D? Glazing D sheathing? Seems to be a, just floating D. And?
I think there, an A and N disappeared there.
Yeah.
That might have been in the cutting and pasting from, from the code, so.
Yeah. I mean, trivial, but.
It's correct, but I'll, we'll check and make sure.
But you always find our typos.
I learned it the hard way.
Any?
Then another question for consistency in Section 3 Building Regulations. In the prior section, you talk about doors and fenestration, and in this section, you talk about doors and windows. Is there a reason why fenestration in one place and windows in another?
Those two sections, the Section 3 Building Regulations for rehabilitations and new construction is looking at more holistic design.
Okay.
So when you look at a whole building and talk about the arrangement of windows, that's, that's fenestration. The second one is, is more about building materials and elements, individual elements like windows or bulkheads or columns.
Okay. Onto the next page there then, four. Number four, so moving down. Yeah, right in there. Now, you're changing it from, seeing that, let's see what those sections, you're changing it from a guideline to a requirement, but then in number four there, IV, it says may and not shall. Is that appropriate for a requirement?
Transom glazing maybe?
Yes.
So the first two are requirements, shall and are not permitted.
Yes.
The second two are guidelines with the may and the, well, actually.
Okay, so the comment is just for the one change from a guideline to a requirement, not for all four items under it?
Right.
Okay, thank you. That wasn't evident to me when I read it.
I just had one typo on the next page there. Under, under six, six, I guess it is, it says it should be hung by cables?
Yes.
Okay, good.
We may hug them too.
And then on, we can always go back, I'm just going to, in case anybody, unless somebody else more on it, on the next page, under demolition, I mean, I asked this kind of earlier, but kind of just throw it out there again when we're looking at it. I didn't know if the commission had any tolerance for putting downtown special review area in that first part, which says demolition of historic inventory buildings, especially designated properties and those eligible for the register, is strongly discouraged. That has more to do with historical inventory buildings, and I think we're trying to, I just feel like we're trying to preserve this downtown district. And even though a building may not be, or the downtown special review area, even though it may not be on the historic register, I feel, I don't know, in my mind, it makes it valuable to kind of put in that, put that there, but I don't know.
Well, the thinking there is that these do apply, like I said in the intro, to any, well, broadly, these regulations apply to any building on the historic inventory eligible for the historic register or on the historic register in the entire downtown subarea. So to limit that section right there just to the DSRA, I think would be, would be a mistake because there are eligible properties outside the DSRA that, that would, that addresses currently. Also, this, the meat of the requirements around demolitions are in Section 2228060, which
Okay.
There, so.
Okay.
And Sarah's most familiar with those, so.
Sounds good. Just trying to do anything I can to protect the DSRA, but it sounds like we have in other sections.
The changes that were made here really had to do somewhat with semantics and then, let's see, how did it, it spoke of demolition of designated properties, which refers to properties on the register.
Yep.
And since we do have, the regulations do address any property on the historic inventory, we thought it was important to include them and then give additional emphasis to properties on the register or eligible for the register.
Okay. Sarah, in your mindset, seem like, does that sound, like it kind of does enough to protect that area, DSRA? I know they were talking more about the historic registered buildings, but.
Right, I mean, the DSRA has a lot of other buildings too that aren't registered buildings. And so if you call that out specifically, it might be, I don't know, discouraging to development where we want development, potentially. But yeah, everything in the, in the DSRA would have to be reviewed by the Landmark Board anyway, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of just for, for emphasis, just to, you know, throw it out there that, hey, let's, let's think about these buildings as a little more important before we just tear them down.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
And really the crux of the change is that we've added the priority, not just to those on the register, but those that are eligible to the register. That's what was missing before.
Okay. Great, okay. Well, I don't see any other questions from the commission here. So thank you very much for the presentation. I think we're at a time to wrap up this section, so I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to the January 22nd?
I would move to continue to January 22nd?
Second?
All those in favor of continuing to January 22nd, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Hampton absent and excused. All right, no public hearing tonight, and I believe Director Cotman, you had some information with regards to study session?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. So with apologies, Tracy Perkoski from the Parks Department was going to present this evening, has a really bad cold, informed me this morning that she would not be able to be here this evening and said she would be happy to come back either meeting in January. So under staff reports, I was going to ask the commission, I have a suggestion for when we bring that back to the commission.
Okay, great, thanks. So no study session tonight. Any old business? Okay, with that, we'll go on to staff reports.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start out with the, the pros plan presentation. In looking at the, the schedule, and I should note, we have been working on improving our notification process so that we get the Imagine Bothell Notice out sooner, which has gone out now for January. Unfortunately, the downside of that is things have changed since we sent it out. So, and what you have in your packet is also what was sent out in the Imagine Bothell Notice. I just wanted to note a couple of changes to that. For the January 8th meeting, we still have the continued public hearing and we're hoping to get a recommendation from the commission that evening on the downtown public space code amendments. And then we would not be doing a briefing on the Canyon Park project. We need a little bit more time in preparation for that. I think we'd noted last time that the draft EIS has been issued and the comment period runs through January 13th on that. So we would have that come to the commission on the 22nd. And rather than a recommendation on the preferred alternative at that time, we would bring you, it'd be a study session on the alternatives that are being looked at in a preferred alternative discussion. So not a, not an action item that evening, but really doing a lot of the groundwork for a recommendation at, I believe, your next meeting in February. So, and then we also have the, the Planning Commission docket coming back to you on January 8th. So with the change of the Canyon Park briefing moving to the 22nd, I would recommend that we bring the pros plan presentation to you on January 8th, if that's acceptable to the commission, so we will add that to the agenda for that evening. So we'd have the one public hearing and then a couple of study session items.
That sounds great.
Okay. So those are the changes to that and also the reschedule there. Also, just tonight, I wanted to do a last call if anyone is interested in the APA membership that we talked about. I know Commissioner Curd has expressed interest so far. He's the only one that I've heard from. So tonight's your last chance if you want to join. The city will pay for the cost for that. You'll get on the mailing list and all sorts of really great information about planning and probably more than you ever wanted to know. But certainly suggested, it's a, it's a great resource as well. So if you are interested, I'd like to know now and we'll.
Okay, I'd like to be added to that if I could.
Okay.
Sure, I'll go for it.
Okay, great. Any other takers?
Okay.
Well, this, this won't be your last time ever opportunity, so we'll, we'll come back. If you change your mind, let me know, we can always add you. So we'll add those three commissioners, and I will ask Commissioner Hampton as well.
Sounds great. I was just about to add that.
I handed out to you this evening the attendance record for the year. Just wanted to give that to you, so that now covers the entire year. If you would take a look at that, if there's anything on there that you disagree with, if you think we got something wrong, please let me know as soon as possible because we will be providing this to, to the council as they're looking at any reappointments. I think we only have two commissioners up for reappointment this time, but this is just information that I think Deputy Mayor Dewar had suggested we, we do this, and it's information that could be helpful for the council as they're, they're looking. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Let me know if there's anything on there that we need to correct. Speaking of openings on the commission, if you know of anyone who's interested, we do have the, the one opening, and if, and we have two reappointments. If you have anyone you know that might be interested, encourage them to apply, and January 10th is the deadline for that.
January 10th deadline?
Yes.
Okay.
And there is information and application online on the city's website. And then last but not least, I just wanted to say thank you to the commission. This has been a very productive year in 2019. We've gotten through a lot of, some pretty heavy lifting on some things, and we really appreciate all of your time and effort and the hard work that you've put in. That doesn't let you off the hook, we've got a lot more to come in 2020, and we'll, we'll be continuing to work with you on that and look forward to that. So on behalf of the staff, I just want to say thank you and wish you all a happy holiday.
Thank you, Michael. Any member reports? Okay, I guess seeing none. I think I'd also like to thank staff for all they bring to us every week. I know how, how understaffed you are and the quality of work that you always bring to us is, is very commendable. So thanks, Dave, and thanks to Bruce who's not here. Sarah, thanks for all your help, and Michael, thank you for your guidance. I really appreciate it. Helps me out a lot. It's been very organized and I appreciate it. Motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourn, say aye. All those in favor adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.